Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the February 18th City of West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Sandra White, would you lead us in the pledge?
To reply, I am the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask anybody that would intend on addressing the commission this evening, fill out a little slip here, you'll find them in the corner of the room, and just fill it out so we can kind of keep track of how many people we have that will be speaking on the different items that we have before us this evening. Give them to Jennifer here at my right, and she'll get them to me, and we kind of go in the order that we receive them, so if you have any strategy, consider that. The next thing I'd like to mention is, anybody that would like to address the commission on something that's not on the agenda tonight but in the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission, now would be the time to do that, so if there's something that you'd like us to address, now would be the time to do that. And I see that there was, somebody filled out a slip about that, so Christina Lores. There should be a button right on the base of, base of the microphone.
It's green, it should be on.
There you go.
Okay.
And you can adjust that to whatever height you want. No, we're not gonna-
Jack's towing, and, oh, there we go, hello, that's way better. Anyway, we're right across from Jack's, and they've been using our driveway to, I just can't get them to stop, I've just almost about had it, I don't know how to even begin to approach it anymore. Using our driveway for a turnaround point, further down the property, using it as a turnaround point, our fences have been broken down, there's really not a lot you can do about it, short of wasting most of your money and your time with lawyers and going after them, and it's just, you just throw up your hands. What I'm here for is that I really think this is just an issue of existing enforcement of the codes that already exist in that area. Sule Street, Jackson, Drever, has basically become a corridor of a parking place for a lot of large rigs, and I mean big rigs, and, I mean, maybe these poor guys don't have a place to park, I kind of don't think that's it, or maybe they, they need just a place for a while, but it seems to me that this is just, in the last several years, really become an issue that I've really noticed, and I'm hoping that it will be addressed and not become something that mushrooms out of control and that existing law be reinforced. And possibly, it could be that maybe code enforcement is just overwhelmed, I don't know, I haven't gotten that far, I just knew that something was an issue here regarding trucks, and I just hope there's enough truckyards available for these fellows, because they sure need them if they need to come onto all these side streets and conduct their business or park their rigs. And this is overnight parking also, we've had it right next to our building, we've also had our water used, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of gallons of our water was used for washing trucks, we caught people doing it, and it's been costly, so I'm hoping that something will be arrived at in terms of making it an issue with enforcement, that existing law would be enforced, and also in future, if any laws are going to be changed, that we look at the existing businesses that are in an area and how they're affected by using streets, city streets, and where businesses are to use as parking lots. It is an issue, for our business it certainly is. Thank you.
Thank you, and maybe, Steve, you can note this, and maybe assist Ms. Lores in pursuing this through code enforcement, I'm presuming that there are the ordinances regarding the parking or something that we can match up with what's occurring and see that she can at least talk to one of the code enforcement officers regarding, you know, what rights the truckers have and what rights the property owners have. Would that be satisfactory to you?
Well, what I would propose is that if she would be so kind to leave her contact information with Jennifer over there, that I or another member of the city staff will contact her.
Great, and thank you for your comments. Okay, anybody else? All right, then, we move on to the consideration and approval of the minutes from the February 4th, 2010 Planning Commission meeting. Looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes of February 4th.
A motion, for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
All abstain, Mr. Chairman, was absent from that meeting.
Okay, one abstention. Okay, this is the good part of the meeting for me, the election of Chair and Vice Chair for-
For those two.
The remaining of this year and up to the end of February, just about the end of February, so I would entertain nominations at this time for Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, first of all, thank you for your year of service, secondly, I would like to nominate Beverly Sandin as Chair.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and all in favor, it's nice to be able to elect somebody that's not here, right?
She can't complain that way.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We can't hear you, Beverly. And since she's not here, normally I would just trade places with the new person at this time, but we're gonna have to leave that up to the Vice Chair, and I'd like to get a nomination for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think I'd like to nominate Russ Leibig for Vice Chair.
Okay, we have a-
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of Russell Leibig being our Vice Chair and taking over this meeting this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none. Before we do that, though, we have one more, we have actually the Secretary to reappoint, and Mr. Rickley, I guess you're still it, right?
I guess I am.
So we have a formality of reaffirming that, so since I'm not the Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
I'd make a motion that we-
Well, I've already done that, Charlie.
Oh, you made the motion, I'll second it then.
All right, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna turn everything over to you, Russ.
Again, thank you for your year of service, and we'll just keep moving on. Next thing is approval of the agenda order. Anybody have any comments or anything they'd like to change? No, moving on. Correspondent staff communications from Steve.
Yes, thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to report on a couple things. You have one piece of correspondence in the packet before you tonight, and that's a letter from John Gabriel on Agenda Item Number Three. In addition, last night, the City Council met as part of a regular meeting, and items of interest, first of all, to the Planning Commission included, approval of the Fulcrum Development Agreement by the City Council, a project that all of you have worked on over the last couple of months, and in addition, there was a public hearing conducted on the medical marijuana ordinance, and it was direction of the Council to continue that matter until November of this year, for a number of reasons, because of the possibility of a challenge to the ordinance, upcoming statewide propositions that deal with the legalization of medical marijuana, as well as concern about potential litigation from medical marijuana advocates who've expressed their opinions during the previous public hearings. One other matter that affects the majority of individuals in this room tonight, at last Planning Commission meeting on February 4th, or actually going back to January 18th, there was the discussion of staff conducting a meeting in the broader community to discuss the issue of commercial vehicles, truckyards, and the definition of truckyards with the community, and rather than keep people in suspense, we have set a date for that, and that will be conducted on the 9th of March at 6:00 PM downstairs in the Galleria. So for those of you who are here tonight to provide input, there will also be another opportunity for your input before this matter comes back to the Planning Commission. Last item is that the March 4th Planning Commission meeting has been canceled, so that the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission will be on the 18th of March, and with that, that concludes my brief report.
Thank you, Steve. Moving on to disclosure of ex parte communications. Hearing none, moving on.
Actually, I've had conversations with, I can recall, three people here on Item Number Two, excuse me, Item Number Three, and that's John Cabrel, Frank Doris, and Gary Gant.
Okay, no more. Moving on to the consent agenda, if there's any questions, we'll hear those, if not, looking for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we affirm the zoning administrator action.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Moving on to the regular agenda, Item Number Two, Public Hearing on Proposed Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Dealing with Commercial Coaches and Signs. Sandra White.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission conducted a workshop on January 21st regarding proposed changes to the zoning ordinance regarding signs and commercial coaches. The first change involves Chapter 1733 of the zoning ordinance, which regulates signs on private property. The proposed change would allow signs in the public right-of-way, where 10 feet or more of right-of-way exists behind the back of an existing sidewalk or behind the curb if no sidewalk exists. The second set of changes involves Chapter 1739 of the zoning ordinance, which regulates off-site weekend directional signs. The proposed changes would allow other types of off-site signage that is not restricted to the weekends and would also allow off-site kiosk. The changes would also prohibit weekend directional signs on properties that are owned by the city. The last round of changes involves commercial coaches used as offices in the M2 and M3 zones. The proposed amendments would follow changes adopted by the City Council on last year that allows commercial coaches to be used as offices in the M3 zone for an initial three-year period. The Council directed staff to develop standards for extending the use of the structures beyond the initial three-year timeframe and to develop language that would also allow these structures in the M2 zone. Two comments were made at the workshop regarding changes involving commercial coaches. It was recommended that the skirting around the base of the structures should match the materials on the structures, and we have added language to that effect, and it was also suggested that the structures be allowed on a permanent basis. And this issue was discussed at the City Council, where concern was raised that the structures could be located on a site on an indefinite basis, and the outcome of that of the discussion resulted in allowing the structures to be allowed on an initial three-year timeframe to preclude this from occurring. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution 101 PC recommending that the City Council adopt proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding signs and commercial coaches.
Thank you, Sandra. With that, I will open the public hearing, however, I don't have any actual slips, so if anybody was intending on speaking on this item, there is one person that would like to speak, I'm sure she could come forward. You will need to actually lower the podium, there's a button on your right. Okay.
By all truck.
Okay, just to break in, before we go too far, can you please state your name?
Oh, Martha Miller.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller, and just to note that this is a topic on signs and commercial coaches, which are-
Right, so you're gonna have all these evil people that don't quite comply, also impacting code enforcement, and all the other things that aren't being enforced now, that's my point, I want to reiterate, while I go to church over by Jack's towing and don't see any big problems, that doesn't mean she doesn't have them. My point is, you're gonna keep making all these ordinances, and only once in a while do they get enforced, so that's my point, is I don't mind passing ordinances that suggest something, but to turn just people that own things into evil is like counterproductive when we don't have enough cops as it is.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a couple, if I could, I guess they're just questions, but Sandra, I was thinking that when we originally did the M3 zone, that, and I believe it was somebody at the port that was actually bringing this up, it was for the port, but I didn't know there was a time restriction on-
There is, yes, there is.
And so then the, what about the ones they have there now? What are you doing with those?
I don't know if you've thought about the ones that we have right now.
The ones that are there now would not be affected, this would apply to new commercial coaches that are located. Incidentally, the time restriction that you referred to was part of the discussion that we had with representatives of the chamber, including Dan Ramos, who I believe testified at the last workshop on this issue.
I thought that there was something in the port's proposal when they were first bringing this forward, that somebody wanted to have it for a long-term basis. If it's not, it's fine, that's fine, I'm happy with three years, I think these things are fine and they could be there forever, I've always thought that, but that's, that's fine. The one I'm having trouble remembering what we did with on the sign, was we talked at one point about all the signs are flush against the building, and now we're going to allow a sign to go out from the building?
This would be a freestanding sign.
Is that what we're gonna call it?
This is a freestanding sign, yes.
That instead of being-
This is not a sign that's attached to the building, this is just a-
No, I'm talking about, I thought we talked something about, and I'm not finding what I'm looking for in here, but instead of the sign being up against the building, as we were talking about developing West Capital Avenue and stuff that we might take the building, or the sign out from the building, like they do in old Sacramento. Can we do that under this ordinance, at this point?
I'm not sure what you're gonna do.
This is, this is-
No, remember, we've talked about how we're trying to redo West Capital Avenue eventually, and then the signs were all flush against the building, and I thought at some point we talked about taking them out from-
Charlie, I think that was addressed earlier or later last year, this has to do, the signs that she's talking about are those that are in the public right-of-way and temporary signs, so those that were installed on marquees and storefronts, we've already addressed that.
Yeah, I think that they came up as part of the discussion when we were revamping the entire sign ordinance, and my recollection is that there's something in the West Capital, I forget what we call it, that encourages those types of signage.
And I thought we had to put something here since it was encroaching into the right-of-way of the city, and that's why I was, I don't know, I thought we talked about it last time, but maybe not, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have just one comment. Sandra, I think you've done a great job on this thing, it's cleared up a lot of the problems that we had with, especially with the temporary signs for subdivisions and that sort of thing. I noticed on Page Five, the recommendation is that the kiosk signs be removed within 30 days of the last lot being sold, or something to that effect, and I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be practical as these different units are sold and there are no more available, that they be removed from the master or the kiosk, if that wouldn't make sense, instead of having directions to areas that there aren't lots for sale after that particular unit gets sold out, and I'm just wondering what the other commissioners might think about that, because we are gonna remove the kiosk once the last lot's sold.
Exactly.
And it just seems kind of practical that in the different units, when they get sold out, that you're not identifying them and directions to them, since we have MapQuest for that and all that other sort of stuff. So I'd recommend that we include that as the individual subdivisions that are displayed on the master kiosk are sold out, that the same rule would apply within 30 days, they get removed. But otherwise, I think it's a great, a great staff report, and I think you've done a lot of work, a lot of hard work, and solved a lot of problems.
Excuse me, Commissioner, can you just clarify, I'm just trying to understand what you're asking, so the kiosk sign is up there, and if one particular property or whatever gets sold out, then you're saying that the kiosk doesn't have to get-
Let's say there's seven or eight, let's say there are eight depicted, and three of them have already sold out, you just remove those, and the way those are built, they're built kind of like the pedestal signs on West Capital Avenue, or whatever, that advertise to different stores or whatever, and that they be removed.
So when sales are completed, that any specific project, they must remove their signs from the kiosk? And what you're saying, what this is saying is, once everything's sold, then the whole kiosk comes down.
Right, and that's been covered already, so that would be my recommendation.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that. Jennifer, do you have any comments? Okay, Sandra, I have one question, on the signs in the public right-of-way. It says that due to the future city improvement projects planned near these locations, a vacancy, or sorry, vacation of the right-of-way is not feasible, however, under the actual ordinance changes, the agreement and the sign permit shall be revocable at any time for failure to comply with this chapter or the terms of this agreement, or if the city determines that the sign interferes with the public's safe use of the right-of-way. Can the city remove the sign because it needs to use, to actually use the right-of-way? It can't, under this, okay, I just wanted to clear that up. We've been talking about these now for a few meetings, so I'm not surprised that there weren't too many comments on the coaches or signs. So with that, looking for a motion?
I think it would be helpful just to make sure we're in complete agreement with what the consensus of the Commission is to restate the amendment as proposed.
I have some language.
I guess-
Or do you have some language?
Yeah, I have some language.
The wording that's on Page Five, would, if it's modified a little bit, would probably handle it, and that says, "The kiosks shall be removed 30 days after a certificate of occupancy or a final inspection has been issued for the last unit or building in the master plan development," and along with that, maybe another statement that-
You want to say sign panel?
Yeah.
The sign panels shall be removed 30 days after certificate of occupancy or final inspection.
Same criteria, right.
Yeah, for, it was, let me read it just to make sure we're all on the same page. Individual sign panels shall be removed 30 days after a certificate of occupancy or a final inspection has been issued for the last unit or building for a development located in a master plan development.
Great. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommended action with that addition.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Passes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, this is a workshop on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance dealing with truckyards and other miscellaneous issues.
Yes, and before Mr. Tilly starts his staff report tonight, I want to go over basically how we're going to handle the discussion of commercial vehicles, truckyards, and other proposed changes tonight, and first of all, David Tilly will lead a discussion going in to a review of some of the prominent definitions that I think are important to understanding the background of this issue with respect to commercial vehicles, with respect to outdoor storage, with respect to truckyards, then raise a number of questions that we have as staff as to how these issues should be handled, and we're hoping that is part of the public input that individuals have tonight, they will address these individual issues that we oppose, and then next, Sandra will provide information as to what she found regarding the experience of other communities, and also talk about the changes that are proposed with regard to how massage is handled in the city, so.
Good evening, Vice Chair Leibig, members of the Commission. We have a brief PowerPoint tonight, and you should have a copy of it at your desk, and the purpose tonight, for my part of the presentation, is to really provide some background about how various things are regulated by the city. At the January meeting, we introduced some proposed modifications, the definition of truckyards, and that brought up actually several topics that are actually fall into different categories and how things are regulated by the city, so I wanted to really briefly, you know, provide some background about those various topics tonight as a way to kind of go forward with this issue. Just why, just quickly, the relevant code sections that we're referring tonight, in case anybody wants to look into this further, these are all out of Title 17, which is zoning, and we're talking about permitted uses, and then we get into more details related to off-street parking and loading, outdoor storage, and then just general definition. outdoor storage and then just general definitions. But if anyone wants to delve into these issues further, we suggest that these would be the code sections that they review first. Truck yards is, was what the topic was first presented as, but that raised several matters. And so, I'll provide up here, I won't, I won't read it for everyone, but the definition of truck yard is, is provided there in red and this is excerpted straight out of the zoning ordinance. And essentially, truck yard is a place where commercial vehicles are kept and they can involve repair and fueling and other facilities like that, but does not involve cargo. If any cargo handling was involved, that's really, could be considered a freight terminal and those are, that's a different classification. This definition does not specify how many commercial vehicles it takes to constitute a truck yard. You know, this is something we may want to consider going forward is to, as you know, identify, you know, how many, how many commercial vehicles would it take to be constituted a truck yard? As I said, no cargo handling is involved with respect to truck yards and currently, the zoning ordinance, truck yards are permitted on a conditional basis in industrial districts only, they are not permitted in any other part of the city. One of the things that came up during our meeting really falls under the category of outdoor storage. We discussed a lot of things about farm implements and other vehicles at our last meeting and out those, all that things kinda fall in a general category of outdoor storage. And again, the zoning ordinance definition of outdoor storage is provided here in red and the next, next bullet down would be kind of some examples of what is typically considered outdoor storage and subject to regulation. That's inoperable vehicles, salvage materials, you know, appliances and other, you know, scrap building materials, things like that that may be brought to residential properties. And these type of things are subject to outdoor storage regulations. Important distinction here is that operable vehicles, including commercial vehicles and recreational vehicles, RVs, boats and things like that, are exempted from outdoor storage regulation because those are considered specifically under parking regulations. So this, and we spoke principally last time about the rural zones and agricultural zones in town, so we skipped the outdoor storage and the more residential areas and focused in tonight on the rural residential, rural estate and agricultural zones. Outdoor storage is limited only fi- to five percent of the lot area in our rural zones and there are exceptions for parcels that are five acres or larger and where there is active agricultural production involved in the property than the outdoor storage regulations do not imply. The outdoor storage regulations, however, do not apply to the agricultural zone. The ordinance is silent with that respect. It addresses most other zones, but does not address the agricultural zone. And again, operable commercial vehicles are specifically excluded from the, being considered as outdoor storage. I think the principal thing we want to discuss this evening and going forward is about commercial vehicles. And this definition is provided from the zoning ordinance that tells you how, as the city defines what a commercial vehicle is. And the key is that this is a vehicle with over ten thousand pounds gross vehicle rating. It may have, you know, two or more axles and a commercial license plate and of course, associated equipment used for those, for those types of vehicles. And when we're talking about parking of these vehicles on private property, the zoning ordinance does treat different zones a little differently. So we're gonna kinda try to elaborate that this evening. This is a matrix we put together describing the rural residential, rural estate and agricultural zones. And says, going across the top, you know, can somebody park a commercial vehicle in those zones? And the answer is yes. And again, this is all, we're talking about off-street now. Even though they are, they're prohibited in residential zones, they are provided for in the rural residential and rural estates area. The caveat of that, of course, is that since nineteen ninety-four, those commercial vehicles have needed to be stored in a garage or barn in the rural residential and rural estate zone. However, in the ag zone, the commercial vehicle parking, the zoning ordinance is silent on that for any property zone agricultural. And currently, there's no specific limit on the number of commercial vehicles that someone could park in, in any of these properties zone this manner. Though we certainly believe there's a practical limit to that, there isn't a specific numerical limit provided in the zoning ordinance. And so tonight and going forward, on this issue, there's some policy questions that we asked, that we're gonna ask the planning commission to consider and we hope you can provide some feedback back to us as well as some members of the audience who tend to comment on this item. You know, and currently, as I mentioned, there isn't a specific limit on the number of commercial vehicles someone could park on a rural estate parcel or a rural residential parcel. There may be practical limits in the real world based on how many vehicles could fit on a parcel and certainly how many of them, if they were in garages, how many garages somebody could intend to build. But certainly, the commission should make, want to consider putting in a specific limit on the number of commercial vehicles, or not. And the garage, the, in the rural residential zone and starting in nineteen ninety-four and then the rural estate zone starting nineteen ninety-five, following adoption of the framework plan, commercial vehicles in those zones have had to be garaged or, or kept in a barn or other, some other type of building. Those have been in place now for almost fifteen years. However, right now, there aren't any paving requirements for those vehicles, so if they are stored, for example, in the ag zone where they don't have to be garaged, there aren't paving requirements. Should there be paving requirements for those, those type of vehicles? And then lastly, you know, we've heard many, a lot of testimony about the operation of commercial vehicles in the area and how that is problematic for, for some persons. Should there be limits on the hours of when those vehicles can be operated? These are some of the policy questions we want to get into tonight and so that when we return to you at the next meeting, hopefully in a hearing format on this topic, we can have potential ordinance changes ready, ready for your consideration in a public hearing format. So that's gonna conclude my portion of it. I'd like to turn it over to Sandra and she's going to report on what we've learned from some other jurisdictions about this particular topic.
I have, I contacted the cities of Davis, Winters, Woodland, Elk Grove and also Yellow County and found that none of these jurisdictions have any parking restrictions regarding the parking of large trucks in their rural residential or ag zones. I did discover that Yuba County adopted an ordinance in two thousand and eight that restricts truck parking in what they called their rural residential and ag zones. And I had laid out, kind of summarized what their restrictions are. But just to briefly go over that, the ordinance, their ordinance regulates the parking and storage of track tractors, of truck tractors on properties zoned, rural estates and agricultural rural residential. Their rural estate zone has a minimum lot size of one acre, which is comparable to our rural residential zone. They have their agricultural rural residential zone has a minimum lot size that range from ten to eighty acres. They also have an agricultural zone called exclusive agricultural zone and they do allow the parking of commercial vehicles in that zone with a conditional use permit. They also require the vehicles to be located fifty feet or more from the property line and screened from adjacent properties. They do allow exemptions for exclusive agricultural zone parcels that are less than forty acres in active agricultural production. And so that's what I've been able to find regarding what's being, you know, what, what's going on in other jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you, David, and thank you, Sandra. Before I open up the public hearing, I'm just gonna-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go over the massage parlor?
Oh, I forgot about that part.
Yeah. Amendments, just to go over that briefly before we get to the- We were directed, recently directed by the city manager's office to change how massage establishments are regulated by the city. Currently, any business offering massage services in a fixed location other than licensed physicians, nurses and other personnel is defined and treated as an adult business under the zoning ordinance and is required to obtain a massage parlor permit. Currently, adult businesses, including massage establishments, are conditionally permitted in the C-two and C-three zones and are subject to spacing requirements. We're recommending changes that would basically allow massage establishments to be treated as any other commercial business. However, they would still be subject to the massage parlor permit law of the municipal code. The changes will also allow the massage establishments to be defined as a personal service permitted as, and allowed use in the C-one, the C-two, the CBD, the WF waterfront, the mixed-use professional office, business park and limited industrial zones similar to barber and beauty shops. And also, the proposed changes would require definitions to the zoning ordinance for massage and massage establishment. That concludes my portion of this presentation.
Okay, thank you, Sandra. Okay, before I open up the public hearing, are there any comments or questions of the staff from the commission? No, okay, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing at this point. I have several slips to talk tonight, so we will be observing the three-minute clock just for fairness. And the first person I have up is Manna Miller.
I'm Manna Miller. I'm more concerned about the staff that you're, you know, and this never gets bothered. God forbid, a little guy owns a truck, you're gonna let him have one truck? Most individual truckers have several trucks.
Thank you.
Staff is paid? You are not, you're certainly not paid anything. My point is, I'd like to see it more fair for the, the average person. She's talking about permits and processes for Yuba City, Marysville. I just came back from Brentwood, Santa Monica, Irvine, Costa Mesa. They don't seem to have any problem raising money, getting huge amounts of property tax, having commercial right next to an estate, next to, you know, ten million dollar house and then you've got a little house. They don't seem to forget that they're, this is America. Even when you come to this city and you haven't been here five years, you can't hardly recognize it. So if you allow just freedom and, and ask people to improve themselves, it's not like they're gonna stick a shanny when they bought a, a nice piece of property. I would like to see things done more like Irvine, Costa Mesa, other places that upgrade, that allow success, but don't make it only able for the big guys to do deals with the city. I think private people owning their own property should be able to do what they want to do and not told by, you know, this isn't Russia, this isn't China. This is America, for God's sakes. I don't mind CCNRs and upgrades, but you, you have to protect the, the average trucker, not the big guys.
Carolyn Rec.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Rec, I live in Southport on a rural estate zone parcel. I have farm implements and tractors, but no commercial vehicles. So I did already submit a comment letter, which you have, so I won't go over those items. I just wanted to mention that this workshop, a, a number of my neighbors were interested in attending or at least interested in this topic, but they were not even aware that this was going on. So it, for future, it would be really nice if the city could notice and send notices to property owners who are going to be affected by this so that they have the opportunity to participate and, and voice their, their concerns, if any. And I hope the March ninth meeting is adequately noticed so that people can get involved. I too researched other cities, counties and actually the entire country to see how they handle commercial vehicles. Pretty much, no commercial vehicles in residential zones. If there are, there are lots of restrictions and commercial use permits associated with them. And most of the time, it's also restricted by zoning, or, or uses. For example, like a truck yard, or that they're unable to do a commercial trucking operation in a residential zone. In ag zones, it's a little different and especially if it's related to the agriculture. So there are still conditions, a lot, for a lot of cities that are attached to that with, that they need pavement or they need something to, to prevent any kind of damage to the property and because, again, in ag areas and these resi- rural residential areas, we are on wells and it's really important not to get any diesel or oil into our groundwater. The Yuba County example applies only to the unincorporated areas of Yuba County. I just wanted to point that out. And it's really not a comparison with the city of West Sac, but it does bring up some important points on how they handle commercial vehicles. And when I was researching this, the different codes and I did come up with a SECOG document that I thought was kinda interesting. It was on goods movement in rural areas. And the SECOG document said that in the Sacramento area, heavy trucks do major damage to oral, older rural country roads not built to handle these loads, which are usually ten thousand pound weight limit and these vehicles on Layden are usually thirty thousand pounds and up. They also mentioned that in simple terms, one fully loaded eighty thousand pound truck causes as much pavement wear as ten thousand automobiles, which I thought was kinda interesting, as far as that, what can, what can happen now. And it's unfortunate that others, that we don't have the money to repair our roads here, obviously, and there is quite a bit of damage that's being done. Anyway, that's all I have to say and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm probably gonna butcher the next one. Dave Bandu. Sorry if I got that wrong, if you wouldn't mind repeating your name.
Yeah, sure, that's, that's fine, David Bandu is exactly how you said it. Regarding to what she said was, you know, trucks are, are America. I mean, we, we do our job, we pave the roads, we fix the levees. You know, back in nineteen eighty-six, when the levee almost broke in West Sacramento, you know, who was, who were the people there? It was the trucks, the farmers. We all got together, we were there before, core engineers were already, you know, before they even got to it. We were, we were already there with the trucks, with the tractors, ready to fix the levee before it got out of hand. And then now you got somebody saying, oh, well, trucks are no good. You know, how do you comply with, I mean, how do you, you know, answer that? You know, West Sac could have been underwater if it wasn't for trucks. You know, it's, it's hard to say, you know, what, what people, you know, go, going through their minds, oh, well, trucks are no good, trucks do this. But if it wasn't for trucks, half the stuff wouldn't be, you know, commodity wouldn't be done. Stores wouldn't have enough food, you know, things like that. So that's what I'm trying to say. So, and if there's anything else, you know, call me or give me, let me know and thank you very much.
John Pamala?
Good evening. My name is John Pamala, I'm a lifelong resident of West Sacramento. I'm also a small business owner. I do not own a tractor trailer. However, I do own commercial pickup trucks for my business. The definition of the truck yard, it states, "Commercial vehicles include anything over ten thousand GVW." I'd like to bring to the commission's attention that this will affect more than just truckers who park on the RR or RE zone property. Keep in mind, a decision made by the commission will not only affect truckers, it'll affect contractors, construction workers, mechanics and just about anyone who owns a one-ton pickup. Even those who use a one-ton pickup for personal use and live in the RR and RE zones will be affected. The zoning ordinance seventeen dot thirty-four dot zero six zero states, "Any vehicle with commercial license plates and meeting the ten thousand pound weight restriction is considered a commercial vehicle." I'd like to point out, most pickups have commercial license plates regardless of their weight. Residents who live in the RR and RE areas purchase their properties for specific reasons. Some are contractors, some are truck drivers. I live at two six four five Bevan Road. Um, I've been up at this podium a few times, as everybody knows. It started, we'll kinda reiterate and go back, it started back in last October, last year. Um, I have a, a buddy that keeps his truck and trailer parked at my property. It's been there since two thousand and five. Um, Carolyn Rec and another neighbor, one moved in in oh seven and one moved in oh five, or, uh, excuse me, one in oh seven and one in oh eight, had a problem with it. And they went to the code enforcement, code enforcement did their job, they came out, they told me to abate, so I mean, so we appealed it. We went all the way down to the appeals board, 'cause we felt it was unjust and it was unfair. Um, the, we had a, a hearing, the code enforcement officer, he came out, we had a hearing, and he dropped all charges. He says, "I wasn't in violation, it is not a truck yard," and he waived all fees. So I figured that was the end of it. Obviously, it's not. A week later, I get another phone call from code enforcement, she's called again and complained 'cause the truck is still there. So now the truck is gone. So, my point is, is that this is personal, and, and it is and it's not. I feel in a sense, I won the battle, but the war, I haven't. And this is why all these guys out here are here, because this is, this is their business. This is a, this is a big deal. And I want, I want to submit, I'm running out of time, but I want to submit, um, I have a petition. I did have a petition. I have a petition from most of all the surrounding, um, areas in the rural area, and I got approximately, I don't know, a hundred and fifty or so of, um, signatures, and I'd like to read this real quick. "To whom is to make concern?" This is about, this is the petition. "We understand, we, the undersigned residents of the Southport community of West Sacramento do not agree with the proposal of banning truck tractors parked on residents' private property. Believe that the Southport area has always been established farm and country living, therefore, the trucks and tractors that are not only essential for farming and country living, but also adds character and the feel of a true country living. We do not feel that the truck tractors or farm equipment should be categorized, categorized as a public nuisance, nor should it be banned from traveling on public roads of Southport due to the vehicle gross weight. We are demanding that the city of West Sacramento respect our voice and preserve our rights of the country environment that Southport has always been known for." You know, I had a lot of people go around and, and, and getting signatures, and not one person has balked on this. They said, "No, I, I think it's wrong, you should have the trucks." The bottom line is, yeah, there is a code, there is a municipal code saying you cannot park your truck and trailer out there unless it's stored in a garage or barn. And no one has that, because this is unreasonable. What we're asking the, the city to do is resolve this. Go back to the drawing board, listen to these people, rewrite the code, and allow us to keep truck and traders, truck and trailer at our property. This is why a lot of people buy property, for they can do that. I understand that you don't want big, huge truck yards, like maybe Clark's Trucking or something in your backyard. I understand that, that's, that's more of the, uh, commercial area. But these are just guys that have truck and trailers, and, and, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Doris. Thank you for your comment.
Can I?
Hand it to Jennifer. Thank you. Up next, David Vera.
Hello. Uh, I own a farm out in Southport, Vera Farms, also known as Days Pumpkin Patch. Um, I do not own a truck and tractor. We rent, we store. Currently, this has not affected me thus far, but what bothers me is that one person can create such a stink in our little community. It, it's unbelievable to me. And as we go forward with the city, and more people move in, and people like myself, people like Gary Gaunt try to operate in this community, we can't allow this. Trying to build, if I had to build a barn to park my trucks and tractors in, I'd be out of business, right now, out of business, if I had to do that. And to make Gary Gaunt or anyone else do that is completely unfair. I'm here to show my support for Gary, for Frank Doris, for everybody else out there that's parking trucks. I understand if it is a true public nuisance, and there is, you know, a hundred trucks coming and going every day down Bevan Road. We're talking about one truck, not hundreds, not a big truck yard. In my place out where I live, I've had people complain. Luckily, I, apparently, I'm not in any sort of, or, I'm okay currently. What if I bought a truck? Am I gonna have to build a barn? Right now, I rent trucks, am I gonna have to buil- build a barn to, for my rental truck? That'd cost more than the rental of the truck. So, I, in farm equipment, then hours, you know, the, the whole thing with hours, I can understand it, but at the same time, I don't think anybody wants to get up at two-thirty in the morning to go to work, they're forced to. They're not trying to create a public nuisance, they're just, they're trying to do their job. That's all that's going on here. And I, I'm just here to support everybody else, and hopefully, we can come to some sort of agreement where everybody's happy and one person can't control the city. Thank you.
Are there any follow-up questions that the commission has, or a reason for me to keep the public hearing open? No? Okay, with that, thank you, I will be closing the, I don't have any more slips. Is that a lot? Yes, no, I'm sorry, this is a workshop, yes. I'll, I'll allow that. If you wouldn't mind, please, uh, just state your name. And after, afterwards, please fill out a slip and give it to Jennifer, so she has a record.
Sorry for being late, uh, but thanks, commission, for hearing me. Uh, my name's Gary Gaunt. I park on Bevan Road, or I used to park on Bevan Road. It started off with the code enforcement issues, um, I had a, Frank Doris and I got a baitment notice, and we fought it and won, the first one, which would be the truck yard issue. Soon after that, we got the, the barn issue, parking in a barn. So, it took three months to fight the first one, and obviously, the barn issue, it's in, it's in the code, so I figured I would abide by it and move it, 'cause it's taken a lot of our time, it's taken a lot of the city's time, so I just felt like, once the planning commission got this straightened out, maybe I'd be able to move back, so. But there's, um, the outdoor storage issues, if you're, I just had a couple of questions. It states that if you're in, so much of your property is in agriculture, you're excluded from the outdoor storage? I just had that question. Um, and, uh, being, uh, it came up to being an owner, or you have to be an owner of the property to park there? I don't know if you guys are heading that direction? Is that true? Um, that's something that, it, it's directly pointed at me. Obviously, everyone knows I don't own that place, but that came up in the code enforcement issue, so I don't know if that's directly aimed at me, or, or if code enforcement, how would they, how would they enforce that? And then that, does that just, uh, apply to trucks? Or, I mean, I have travel trailers, too. I mean, does that mean if I park my travel trailer on someone's property, it has to move? And horses? I mean, I have horse, you know? I don't know. Well, I don't know where this is all going, with the, owning the property part of it. So, I had that question, and then there was one more slip in my mind. Oh, on the Doris property, there's agriculture on the back and rural estates in the front. And there's a uncertain boundary part to that property that I'm very unclear about. It states that the boundary has to be the road, or a property line, or a lot line, or something to that effect, and it doesn't apply to this property. So that needs to be looked into. If you could, please. And that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you, Gary. And again, if you wouldn't mind filling out a slip, handing it to Jennifer. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now. Sandra, I, uh, got a couple or a few specific questions, um, hoping that you guys can address those regarding the outdoor storage issues, uh, the percentage of the property, um, which excludes the barns, the, uh, need to be an owner, and, uh, boundaries, boundaries of the property lines between rural, residential, rural estate, and ag.
Regarding the outdoor storage, um, there's an exception for, in the rural residential and rural estate zones that are, for parcels that are at least five acres in area and where agriculture is the primary use of the property, uh, the outdoor storage regulations do not apply. And of course, that, they don't apply at all to agr- zone, parcel zone to agriculture. Uh, regarding the boundary question, um, this actually was considered by the commission at this specific location, maybe five or six years ago, under that provision, and there is a, on the Doris property there in Bevan, um, the zone boundary between rural estates and ag does, um, cross through his property. That was established at the time when, when Bevan Road was thought to be the alignment, future alignment of Village Parkway, um, as it crossed, um, from Jefferson, um, heading east. That boundary line may be adjusted in the upcoming general plan update, since that, um, Village Parkway, or, or in this case, excuse me, Southport Parkway, will not, no longer follow the alignment that was originally shown in the framework plan. It'll actually come in, um, further south, um, as, as showing where South Parkway already hits Jefferson, um, it does come in and point, uh, much south, further south than Bevan than what, what the framework plan had originally, um, shown. And maybe also the other question was related to the owner of the property versus the owner of the truck. Um, we tried to address this at our, at our last meeting, where we were, we were trying to carve out, make sure we carved out an exception for the sole proprietor truckers that, in the, from the definition of truck yard, so that sole proprietor truckers who did bring their trucks home, um, to these rural properties, um, would not be considered, um, a truck yard. And the, what we discussed at our, at the last workshop on this was, was that the, the truck, it didn't necessarily, the truck owner didn't necessarily need to be the property owner, just, we need, the owner of the truck would be to bringing the prop, bringing the truck to their property where they resided. You know, whether or not they, whether they owned the property or not, it was more about where they resided than whether or not they actually owned that property. That's what I recall from our, our la- our last discussion. Um, I believe those were the questions you had. Do you have anything, uh, for, further for us on this? For the questions?
Did those answer your questions? I, I didn't quite catch the, uh, reason between the actual, the boundary part between the rural, rural, residential, rural estate.
Yeah, the, um, this, ultimate, ultimate alignment of, um, in the original Southport framework plan, Southport Parkway, as it came along and crossed Jefferson and headed east and crossed the, um, the former Yolo Charlotte, now the Clark'sburg Blanche Trail, was intended to be the, the boundary between the rural estate zone to the north and the agricultural zone to the south. So that zone boundary does cross the Doris property there at the, towards the end of Bevan Road, and so he does have both zoning on his property currently. Um, we, we would anticipate potentially changing that to match the future, the, the formal alignment of Southport Parkway that was approved during the Yarborough and River Park, um, discussions, um, potential, with the general plan update potentially next year. So, that zone boundary may move south to fi- to that ultimate road alignment.
Thank you. Um, this is a public workshop. I know I keep saying hearing, but this is a workshop. Um, so I'm going to, uh, just bring it back to the commission for comments. Start on, start on here, Charlie.
I, I think this is, uh, an interesting issue that's come before us here tonight, because it's, it's involving the livelihoods of so many people. I, Sandra, the best thing I can see that you have going here is you have a room full of people that would like to give you an idea of what they think is right for the ordinance. And I, I sincerely hope that every one of them shows up at your workshop, because then it's gonna give you an idea of what people are doing and how they're making their living and how they survive by having one truck being parked on their yard. And I, I'm not sure that that's the end of the world for our city. One of the things that you have to, and, and you're asking a couple of policy questions, and I'm not even sure where you're going, 'cause I've, I was in the trucking industry for over forty years, so I have a little idea, and I've yet to find one of the trucks ever parked inside a garage. And I mean, I, I'm not quite sure how, what you're looking for in the garages that you think they should be parked in, whether it's just the truck part of it, or the whole trailer, or you're expecting them to disconnect every night. That, I thought when we talked, the last time we talked about this, we talked that that was just kind of overdoing it, parking a truck inside a garage on any of the areas. I didn't know that it was specific only to agricultural. And I think you have to look really hard at that. You know, and I think that if you get the group of people that are here tonight into your meeting and get talking to them, and you ask some of these policy questions, it's going to be interesting what I think they'll come back at, because you're talking about garaging, which I, like, again, like I tell you, I've never seen a truck ever garaged anywhere. Paving might be interesting, they, they might have an idea for you, what they're doing at the site that they're parking at, because we are on wells out in that area a lot of the time. So it, and I'm sure, and they're on wells, so they're certainly not gonna try to contaminate their own water system. The hours of operation, of course, are extremely difficult, because they change almost daily. And that's the problem with the trucking industry, is one day you'll go to work at two or three o'clock in the morning, the next day it'll be eight o'clock in the morning. It just depends when the construction jobs start, and it's kinda hard to tell what that's gonna do. I just believe that having everybody in the room at one time, you know, the biggest question is the number of trucks on a site, I think, you know, and that's, that's where you have to decide where a terminal is. I don't, again, I'm telling you, I don't believe one truck is a terminal. You know, you might even have two, but once you start getting up there into numbers, then maybe it is gonna be a terminal, and that's what you're gonna have to look at. You know, and I, I was reading your staff report, but I didn't get the answer to what the hearing officer finally established, because we obviously heard that whatever code enforcement or did with the Doris property, that he ruled that it was not a truck terminal. Was it just strictly because it was only one truck? Do we know that?
He determined that, uh, the truck on Mr. Doris's property did not constitute a truck yard.
Because it was just a single unit. Okay, and, I mean, that might be part of what we look at when we get into this, because I think that you, that makes perfectly logical sense to me, that that would be how we would do it. Uh, you know, I think all the other questions are out there. I, I just, um, looking forward to you meeting with the other people in the industry that are there, and I think that you'll find that, you know, it's something that's very workable with the whole group, and we can come up with something that we can all live with, and make sure that somebody that does own a piece of property can use this piece of property. I think that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I have some questions.
I just believe that having everybody in the room at one time, you know, the biggest question is the number of trucks on a site, I think, you know, and that's, that's where you have to decide where a terminal is. I don't, again, I'm telling you, I don't believe one truck is a terminal. You know, you might even have two, but once you start getting up there into numbers, then maybe it is gonna be a terminal. And that's what you're gonna have to look at. You know, and I, I was reading your staff report, but I didn't get the answer to what the hearing officer finally established. Because we obviously heard that whatever code enforcement or did with the Doris property, that he ruled that it was not a truck terminal. Was it just strictly because it was only one truck? Do we know that?
He determined that the truck on Mr. Doris's property did not constitute a truck yard.
Because it was just a single unit? Okay, and I mean, that might be part of what we look at when we get into this, because I think that you, that makes perfectly logical sense to me, that that would be how we would do it. You know, I think all the other questions are out there. I, I just am looking forward to you meeting with the other people in the industry that are there. And I think that you'll find that, you know, it's something that's very workable with the whole group, and we can come up with something that we can all live with, and make sure that somebody that does own a piece of property can use this piece of property. I think that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I have some questions. I just have a couple of questions, and first on, just by way of process, you're having another, my understanding, right, we're having another workshop on this issue on the ninth, is that right? With the? We're not, but there'll be a public workshop?
Well, this will be a workshop that was following the direction of the planning commission back in January, to have a discussion with all members of the community, including individuals that are in the trucking business, as well as residents that are affected by trucks in the area as well.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, because it's not us, it's the public, and then it'll come back to us for the public hearing, where the issue will be framed up from those, this, this meeting and that, okay. I had just a couple of this questions regarding kind of how we got here. Because it's just, we're getting into policy questions, I'm not quite sure these are the right policy questions. And, so when, if, in the hypothetical world, there was a user, or a property owner in the ag district, or the ag zone, who started parking, I'm just gonna use a hypothetical, number five trucks out there, there is no, I'm going to, what we're trying to establish here is, when is it, we deem it to be basically a truck yard, correct? When is it, when are we storing trucks? When has it become almost a live business? Is that a true statement? Is that, is that one of the things we're trying, I mean, I know?
That certainly is, you know, one of the issues is, you know, we certainly have, we're, tonight, we were trying to, you know, separate, you know, truck yards from commercial vehicle parking, because they're really considered in different, you know, contexts, but
Right.
certainly, there's a threshold, we probably haven't established that yet, is when does it really become a yard?
Right.
And not just, you know, someone who brings their truck home, you know, at night. Because currently, the definition of truck yard isn't specific terms of, you know, how many commercial vehicles does it take to, before you become a yard?
Right. One of, let me kind of get up to you there, because one of the things I'd like a definition of, and maybe the folks at the March ninth meeting can help define this for me, and I heard it from one of the speakers, and I forgot who it is, I apologize. Just because, but who will be affected? My assumption, and you can tell I'm no trucker or ag person, and that's, I hope you're good with that. But I, I'm under the assumption that we're talking about ten ton, a ten thousand dollar, a ten thousand dollar, ten thousand pound truck. I'm, I'm meaning, I'm thinking of the truck, the bigger trucks, the big rigs, so.
I'll let them, I'll let them answer.
Yeah, let them answer. So, that's my assumption on this, and what, so when I'm hearing that other trucks and pickup trucks might be affected, that, that is not the intent, at least my intent, from a policy perspective on how we deal with this. I think that the issue is, is, at least in my mind, the big diesel trucks that have eighteen wheelers, or whatever you want to call them, that could cause damage to rural roads, that, whatever the case, if those come, and Mr. Vera or Dave was right, you know, you, we have ten of those going down a road, it's gonna be a problem for everybody. And I, I don't think anybody wants to see that. But those are the trucks I'm talking about, so I just wanted to be clear on that. So, when does it become a yard? Is, is kind of the issue, and is, is a truck yard by our definition currently, when you have it here in zoning ordinance, or are you meaning a specific business, or can, does it have to be a for-profit business, or just an operation? I mean, that, this is the operation, so somebody could just be storing trucks, there's no special business designation or permit people have to get to have that?
Well, a truck yard, as David mentioned in his presentation, truck yards are only conditionally permitted in the M1, the M2, and the M3 zones, so they would have to get a special.
So, if you were gonna establish a truck yard, you can only go to those areas, but
Exactly.
if you're, just happen to have one, because you start getting trucks onto your land, or whatever else, then we can define that as a truck yard, and theoretically, you're saying, if you're gonna do that, you have to do it over there, if it's a business, okay? You know, I, I'm just, I'm looking forward to getting some of the feedback as well from the, from the truck owners, and those folks that use this as a business, because it is important, we get that. I currently, looking at the, the commercial vehicle parking zone, and again, the feedback I'm gonna need is, what I'm thinking of are the big diesels here. I, I really don't see that we've had any issue with the kind of the commercial parking vehicle on rural, residential, rural estate, agriculture. The question I'm posing back to you is, how do we all prevent or have the mechanisms to stop the potential yards? And that's what we're grappling with here. And I, I don't have the answer, I'm looking forward to getting feedback. But currently, from a, you know, it, you know, it happens today, it happens on some rural streets, people park their, I mean, urban streets or suburban streets, people happen to park their diesels, and that happens. But what we don't want to see, I think, by all means, we kind of land where we, we don't want to see it in proliferation, that is, this starting to accumulate without any real checks for people, and so to say, you know, it could be detrimental to what we're trying to achieve, as, as even in the agricultural rural parts of the city. So, those are the kind of things that we're dealing with. You know, the garage requirement, I didn't get a sense that anybody else has that from the other cities, is that a?
Like I said, you would, you would count, you're, you're correct.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I mean, we have it today, and let's just get the elephant out in the room, no one's doing it today. So, I'm, I'm just, you know, some of, some of this has to be thought of, of, you know, a bit of common sense here, if, you know, we don't want to be the lone wolf in this, kind of having that requirement. But I would also say that parts that I am, you know, concerned, well, concerned with, but want to pay attention to is, you know, areas in the rural, residential, and rural estates. Maybe going on going-forward basis, you know, or, you know, there's a policy where, you know, as property changes hands, you know, maybe we'll look at that approach, but, you know, I don't see it in the agricultural, the need to do, go back there. Probably in the rural estates, and I'll make sure I got my designation, rural, residential, rural estates, the rural residential is, or is the five acres and greater, right, for our, in our city?
Rural residential.
I'm sorry, one acre and greater.
Rural estate is two and a half, and I think it is five.
Thank you. So, again, I'm just kind of thinking in those terms. You know, from a policy perspective, it's a policy that frankly isn't working right now on the garaging requirements, so. Anyway. Paving requirements, I don't have an opinion, so I'm interested in, as Mr. Moore is, kind of getting feedback from the folks that actually live and work out there, and bring a truck home. Because I think you know, frankly, if it's, you know, those are our city's roads, and we all have to pitch in to pay for them, so consistent use gets out there, we gotta think about that, because we all end up having to over, use of those roads could be, could be used for, it's just one of the things we have to consider. And limits on the operation, again, I don't think that's a real issue, because I think you have to, these are parking requirements, not a business. I go back to the truck yard scenario, if it's, if it's a truck yard business, whatever else, then those are managed, but if it's a parking issue, if I've allowed a car, there's no hours of operation for me in my suburban neighborhood. So, anyway, those are just some thoughts I have on some of these issues. I am looking forward to getting some of the feedback, so I'm a little more educated on sort of what's at stake, and I hope, in that spirit, folks will be willing to provide that, and that's all I have.
Okay, I'm still going to keep it with the commission at this point, if Chairman Ludesma still has questions that he'd like to ask specifically.
I'm not the chairman. Thanks, though.
Past chairman.
Thank you.
Then I'll open it, then I'll open it back up. I just wanted to go through, through what we've got, and then I'll, I'll refer back to him to see if he wants his questions answered tonight. Again, this is, this is a workshop.
Yep.
This will come back to hearing, and there's another workshop on this, so what you provide at the city, I'm sure we're going to hear about as well, so. There comments down there?
Sure. Interesting topic. I live on the other end, so I'm not real knowledgeable about what goes on in the south area, although it is, it is a concern of mine, but my nephew is a trucker, and not an independent, he drives for another company, but he does bring Thank you. So, it is interesting to me to see how the independents work and, and support their livelihood. I'm not in support of the garaging of the trucks. I just think it's a waste of money, unless they're inoperable. If it's a truck that you guys are having in use, and are moving, and hopefully using it, so hopefully you're working, I don't see why you would have to house it. I'd like to reiterate Commissioner Ludesma's concern about the types of trucks, and I think it was Mr. Pumala that said that it might include one ton, one ton pickup trucks, or the large commercial trucks, and I'd like a little more information on that, if that's true. All trucks, even quarter, half-ton trucks, are all commercially licensed, so we all have, if you have a truck, it's a commercial plate. I do know that much. The limits on hours of operation, I'm not in support of that. I don't have it in my own area, I have neighbors that like to park and play their loud music, and there's really nothing I could do about it, unless it's after midnight, or after ten o'clock, and that's just something that you have to deal with, with neighbors, anyhow. I do look forward to the outcome of the scheduled workshop, and I hope that all of you that are here in attendance will go, because we do really want to hear constructive criticisms and thoughts, and we're in essence putting it in your hands to help us figure all this out. We don't want, we want to, I, I feel, would feel really happy about having a consensus. And since you guys live in that area, and work in that area, I think that you guys should definitely have a, a voice in that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Sandra, before I pass it to Ron, just one point of clarification, how I interpreted trucks. It needs to have more than two axles, correct? So, pickup trucks, can, can we get a clarification on that, just now?
And/or?
Yeah, more than two, that's correct.
And/or having more than two axles?
That's, that's the current definition.
Okay.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, can pickup trucks be included in this?
Like duallys, or, you know, the ones with the big?
Really?
That's a concern of mine.
If you get to a dually, you'd have three axles, or two axles in the back. And some of those are very heavy.
I have a neighbor who has them, so.
When you load them with all your equipment and stuff in there, it gets pretty heavy.
So, a dually is considered two axles, even though they're?
Well, if you, yeah, I mean, you're stretching it, but I mean, there's ways of doing it. You know, it's your weight that you're concerned. So, that's what Sandra needs to iron out, so that we don't include.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. There've been a lot of great comments, I, I'm presuming staff is gonna follow up on those, I'm, I'm gonna try not to be redundant, but there are some things that, opinions that I, I may repeat. I think, first of all, to try to simplify this, this matter, I don't see any place for the ag zone to be included in what we're doing. I think agricultural, there, there probably a thousand acres of, of Southport is still gonna be zoned ag in the general plan revision, and we don't want to impede those folks that are, that are farming to have to worry about garaging trucks, and where they park their trailers, and their implements, and that sort of thing, so. I, I see that the, the commercial vehicles definition includes ags, ag zones, and I'd like to see it when it comes back to, to not have that. And just concentrate on the rural, residential, and rural estate properties. I think the, it's too bad that, that we didn't have the workshop, or that the public didn't have the workshop with staff before this meeting. And I think how that's conducted is gonna be really important. I wouldn't want to see adversaries in the same room trying to, to work this out, and I would suggest that, that staff work with Carolyn Reck and Paul Chavez. They have some concerns that have been expressed, and then also meet with the other folks that have indicated that they're interested in, in, in this area, the truckers and those people that are sympathetic to, to their, their continuation of, of the uses. The storage item, I, I could see somebody spending fifty thousand dollars to build a barn to store a truck in, because of our sprinkling requirements. Now, most of these parcels don't have city water, and I agree with Commissioner Blackburn, it doesn't, doesn't really make sense. Maybe some screening, like Uba County is, is requiring, would, would be sufficient. Probably nothing any, any more restrictive than what we require those areas that allow commercial trucks to park. Now, would, would probably be sufficient. I'm a little concerned, too, about the, the definition of trucks used solely for the active permissible use of, of agriculture. There, the, the properties that are probably in violation right now are, are not primarily agricultural. And I don't want to end up with a technicality, that we spent all this time working on this thing, and then because the, the use of the property isn't primarily agricultural, the, the city asks the, the people to move, and so we, I think we really need to look at the language that's included there. The truck yard definition, there are really two items that we're looking at. One is truck yard definition, and I think the first part of, of the staff report, it says, we're one or more. The staff's recommendation, as in this workshop, is to, to put the Doris property in violation, really. The hearing officer concluded that because it was only, only one truck, that it wasn't really a truck yard, and that kind of makes sense to me, that a truck yard would be multiple trucks coming in and out, and there are, there are conditional uses in certain zones for that, so. I would suggest that we leave, we, the definition of a truck yard be more than one truck, and delete all the other stuff as far as what's exempted. If you have a truck yard, one of the conditions be more than one truck, then the revisions to commercial vehicle parking, that's the second item that we're addressing, all of these issues regarding screening, or putting them in a building, and that sort of thing takes care of itself. So, I know that the staff has some, some concerns about the definition of, of a truck yard, but I think in general terms, a, a truck yard would be more than one vehicle being parked. The presentation David Tilly made really summarizes most of those questions regarding the policy questions, and I just want to make sure that we've covered all those. I guess the other, only other one would be, two of them would be, whether or not the the operator of the truck was the owner of the property, and I think, Dave, you clarified that, that the intent is that the resident of the property be the, the truck owner, and also the paving thing, and we went through the parking of RVs in rural areas a couple of years ago. And before we changed those policies or ordinances, somebody in a rural area could just park their, their motorhome in their front yard, and in February, when there's, the ground's all muddy, you know, get a tractor or something, and pull it out of there, and leave ruts and that sort of stuff. And I think what we established for the rural, residential, and rural estate areas, is that if you parked a, a vehicle on the property, it had to be in an all-weather type surface, not paved necessarily, but in a gravel area, so that you're not creating a nuisance for your neighbors as far as tracking mud on the road and that sort of thing. And so, in a rural, residential, or rural estate area, if you're gonna be bringing a truck in and out, you probably shouldn't be tracking mud from your yard on the street and down, down the road. So, those are my comments, and, and I really really want to make sure that, after these meetings are held with the concerned citizens, that if there are, if there is controversy, and we, we can't get to something that, that we feel comfortable with, that is gonna really resolve get to something that, that we feel comfortable with, that is going to really resolve this problem. Um, and I'm, I know everybody doesn't necessarily, um, expect to get everything they want, but something reasonable for a neighborhood where a truck would be coming in and out, uh, trying to preserve some of the heritage that we have in the community. I live in that area, there, I have neighbors that, that have trucks. And, uh, personally, my feeling is that's one of the reasons I bought out in the rural area. Um, for years I had a next door neighbor that hauled tomatoes in the summertime and, uh, that was part of, that was part of the life and it was no different than a rooster crowing or, or a horse wining or something like that. So I think that, uh, we, we should try to keep, keep perspective of, of the part of town that we're, we're talking about. This is the only area in, in West Sacramento that has rural, uh, property, the rural estate and rural, rural residential. So getting back to my, my point there, I, I want to make sure that if we have, still have controversy, then I would recommend that we have another workshop. And then, then try to, try to come back with something that's not, that we're not going to have to spend an hour or two trying to sort through to, to figure out. You know, a menu is, is nice, but if there's a lot of contention still, I want to be able to, uh, to talk about it one more time before we make a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Um, I, I'm going to keep this closed. We, we actually still have more to talk about. Um, I see this as a general question of compatibility, uh, dealing with the rural residential ag interface. Uh, the intent of the ordinance, I believe, was to limit yards in residential areas, but, but still allow owner operators the ability to drive their trucks home. Um, I, I, I don't believe anyone here is opposed to trucking. Everybody here realizes that we live in an industrial based, based town. Uh, but I did appreciate some of Ms. Rick's comments. She brings up valid points regarding, uh, road use, the weight of the trucks, um, distance from neighbors for parking. Uh, that was in the Yuba ordinance as far as parking distance from a nearby residential home. In our rural residential areas, we are sometimes actually less than one acre in some rare cases, but mostly one acre plus. But those houses are, are still somewhat close together, so I could see a concern there. Um, I'm, I'm okay with limiting, uh, trucks to one to two owner oper- operators. Um, I think there should be a limit written into it. And I'm also okay with screening versus the buildings. Not necessarily written as the Yuba plan. I think ours should, if we do go that route and this should be worked out in the public workshop, ours should, um, conform to the Southport framework plan. Uh, and then the other concern I have is with trailers. So I think everybody else here had, uh, most of my other concerns covered, so I'm going to leave it at that. We actually have another part to this ordinance workshop, and that is massage, um, which surprised me as I was reading about trucks to go right into massage. I have to admit that. Um, and I know that, uh, Commissioner Ledesma has some comments on that.
Well, I just had a, a question because I heard, thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, and I think Sandra, you, you brought this up in the, um, overview of, of, of the report, of your staff report. Um, did you say that, that, that...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, just before the individuals who are present leave, uh, I think there, it's important to have a discussion regarding the meeting on March 9th. So the individuals that have left could come back for just a moment. I think it's, uh, I think staff has some questions, so there's no misunderstandings as to what the intent of that meeting is and who would be invited.
I'll put, I'll hold my, going to get them.
So, um...
They're not opening up until we call the comment.
Correct, that is correct. But we want to talk about the meeting on tonight, um, and the format. Obviously tonight, there were a number of individuals, uh, present. It was also indicated by Mr. Doris Missreck and other individuals of respect at the, of the importance of noticing everybody in the area. Uh, because of the size of the area, that represents a real challenge, uh, to staff. I think, uh, some of the individuals here did a marvelous job of getting individuals that are interested in the issue here tonight to give their testimony. But I don't know if that necessarily reflects the full view of testimony and opinions that are out in the area with regard, uh, to the issue. So first of all, uh, for those of you who did show up, uh, if you could please, uh, leave your name and address with us to make sure that you are included in that workshop, that would be helpful to us. Uh, for individuals who are not here tonight, but you know who are, that you want to make certain that attend that meeting, please notify us. The difficulty, as I indicated before, of notifying individuals on over 2,000 acres in the city representing different ownerships is, is definitely a challenge. So I'm asking you all as individuals who attended at night to let us know other individuals that are interested in the issue and that goes on, on different sides of the issue. Um, we will try to notice it to the best of our ability. Does that involve getting written notices out to all of you? Certainly we'll miss some individuals. But if you could assist us in that effort, then we'll have, uh, a representative meeting that hopefully will resent the collective view of all people in Southport as well as those of you who took the time to go out tonight. So if you could, uh, please do that, that'll help us in that effort.
Probably fill out one of those forms and just give it to Jennifer when you leave.
Yes, I think that would help. And then we will also be contacting the other parties because I do not want this to be an issue at a later point in time of who was invited, who was noticed, and, and have it as a potential cause of action later on.
Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Doris gave me about 30, 32 names of people, uh, that I already have on the list. So if you were on that list, you don't need to give the...
Well, provided that it has, it, it's clearly written, we can read it and we can provide you with that notice. If it's not, then we'd appreciate having that.
At this point, we actually don't have a date for when this would be coming back to a public hearing.
No, we, we do not. It'll be based really on the outcome of what occurs there and what our collective views are as to is it ready to come back to the planning commission?
Okay. Well, thank you. We're, should, should I just...
Yes, and of course also check the city's website. We'll try to post it on there as well.
We don't have much left on the agenda, but it is just massage and I don't know how many people here.
That's okay, they can, I'll...
... We let that go.
Uh, that's okay. That's, no, yeah, that's fine. Um, staff, I just do, do have a question regarding, um, the surprising addition to our ordinance on this one, which is the massage establishments. Um, I would, uh, you, you mentioned in your staff report that, um, that this would be, um, defined as a personal service and added to the land use zoning matrix. So it'd be, it'd be thought of as any other business coming in. But I think I heard you say that there would be still a special permit?
Yes.
That would have to be required?
Yes.
What, what permit was that? Cause I'm...
It's called a massage, massage parlor permit law.
Is that a, is that our local?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It was adopted from Yolo County in 1978. And since then, Yolo County has repealed its massage parlor law, but we haven't got around to that yet. But it's still, you know, on the books, so it would, they would still have to go through that procedure with the business license, um, department. And that's a...
So this is, it is, it's a city?
Yes.
It's a city law?
It's a city law, yes. Yeah.
Okay. The only reason I ask is, is, is for the same reasons we're, we're, from an economic development perspective. I, you did note that there were, I think you said 37 massage NVs. And just knowing a little bit about that and not that industry, but certainly about the, the nature of small businesses, any business that's growing right now and proliferating, especially those franchise ones are, are, um, worth just taking note of. And, you know, I'd hate for us to still be restrictive. And I understand that law and where it came from and it's, and it's intent. But, um, anyway, so we're not legislating that today, it's just around the land use designation. So I just want to be clear on that front.
That's correct.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay. Commissioner Morzini.
Yeah, I had, I had one too. And, and not to, uh, pick on massage parlors, but I would like to see in the definitions when we define personal services, uh, that massage parlor be added to the list rather than put to the front of the list. And, and in the definition of a, of a personal service like a beauty shop, barber shop, nail salon, tanning salon, health spa and weight reduction salon and a massage parlor where...
We'll call it a massage establishment.
Yeah, just put it at the end.
Yeah.
We don't want people to get the wrong impression of what our priorities are.
The definition is definitely worth chuckling, yes. Anything? Okay. Uh, again, this was a public workshop, not a hearing. Uh, and at this point, we don't have a date, which it will be coming back to hearing, but...
I believe thi- this one will be ready to go back to, come forward to you in a public hearing, March 18th.
I do want to echo Commissioner Morzini's thought if, um, on that, for us to be open that another workshop may be necessary. Um, just since in the room today, you know, I'm not sure how much will be resolved, um, on the 9th. So, excuse me? I just, I would just, I would just, I would just ask staff to be open to the fact that I, I, I know we're probably, there's probably things we want to get in front of council or so on and so forth. But we just need to be open to that. If this is a fairly contentious... One of my pet peeves, especially, um, as chair here, was, um, having a, you know, not, not, this body's not afraid to make tough decisions we've made in the past. Um, but when things are so divisive, it's not really healthy. So just one of those things, I echo your comments, Mr. Morzini. So if there are things we can do, be open to, um, we should be.
All right. Um, so it may or may not come back on the 18th for hearing. Um, would we see it as a workshop if it's not a hearing? Or would you be considering delaying it?
That's a decision we will make at a later time.
They'll make it, okay. Okay. Any informal discussion?
I actually do have informal discussion tonight. You know, and actually, this probably involves Mr. Tilly more than anybody else. Since we've opened our library and we've opened our college, it's impacted almost all the businesses in the area where everybody's trying to park in their parking lots and they can't get their own customers in. Are we doing something to review that at this point?
Uh, Greta Wolers on our staff is our point person on that and has been in active communication with the property owners and the library and other users. So, um, this is certainly not something that has gone unnoticed.
No, I, it's, well, I think it's happened here in our own parking lot. But I, it kind of brings me to the, the second part of my question is that when we did that and we talked about parking and I think at least one of us says, are we sure that we have enough parking over there? And you said there's all new requirements. Does that mean that we need to look again at our parking for the downtown area because of this?
The only things, the only things parking wise we've changed in the last, you know, couple of years dealt with residential. We haven't, we haven't changed any of our commercial parking requirements.
Then how did we end up so short over there?
Well, it's, there's being short on paper versus being short, you know, in the real world.
But we're okay, uh, paper wise, but we're, yeah, I mean, obviously there's a ton of parking going on. So I, I'm just curious if that meant we had to relook at that for commercial ventures down there? I know we did something on residential, but when commercial's involved, if we need to take a second look? Or maybe they'll all start taking the bus. Streetcar. Good?
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I have just, uh, we had a long time member of the community, Jerry Sanders, passed away on the 14th. And I'd like to, uh, adjourn this meeting, meeting in his honor, if you would, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Jerry Sanders, all I gotta do is pound the gavel.
Oh.
Good.
Thank you. I was waiting for a motion, an actual motion.